Today is Monday, April 21st. We will call this regular city council meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone. If you could please stand during the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Deb.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
Motion from Harley, second, from Rodney. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Across the mayor's desk today, I'd just like to thank Flynn McCannigan. He's our videographer and just hope everyone had an enjoyable Easter weekend. The council have anything that they would like to share? Okay, hearing done, we'll move to an update from Jacob, our city minister.
One quick reminder, we have our annual spring cleanup day. It will be this coming month on Saturday, May 10th. That'll be from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It'll be at the Aquatic Center. So let's say note that change. Last year, we held it there due to flooding. It actually worked out quite well, so we're planning to make that the new home for the cleanup day. So it'll be Saturday, May 10th, 8 to 2 at the Aquatic Center.
Thank you. Move to Agenda Item Number 7. This is citizens' opportunity to address the council of any item that's not on the agenda. Not seeing anyone that would like to speak, we will move to Agenda Item Number 8, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our April 7th special session that we had that was at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and then our regular city council meeting at 5 o'clock. Approve the bills to be paid this cycle. Approve a Class C retail license to Volume J LLC. Approve the department reports as well as the reports from the various boards and commissions that have met. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Harley, second, from Brad. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 9, which is a public hearing, and it's 5:12. We will open that public hearing regarding the airport snow removal equipment.
Hi, I'm Joe Romfels from Bolton, Maine. You guys said before you use a public hearing for a new tractor and snow blower and use, well, in the documents, it had either a new plow or reuse of an existing plow. And so the engineer's estimate on the project was $465,000 for the tractor, the blower, and then reuse of the plow. The engineer's estimate on everything was $485,000 as well.
So the use of the old plow that attached must have been much simpler than what was anticipated.
It was. Well, we also had to leave the specifications open by FAA requirements such that any carrier vehicle that met it could bid as well. So with that, attaching that to the carrier vehicle could require a little more work for one bidder over another. And so we took that into account when we were doing the engineer's estimate as well.
Any other questions for Joe?
I don't receive any comments for the public hearing notice.
Okay. Anyone here in council chambers that would like to speak with this hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. It's 5:14. Thank you, Joe. And we will move to Agenda Item Number 10, which is also a public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget.
All right. After about four months of work, we're through to the final step of adapting the budget. So I will provide some of the highlights and then have to answer any questions anyone may have. On the revenue side things, total revenues budget for this fiscal year 2026 is $36,473,754. Of that, about $4.5 million is from property taxes and about half, 18.6 million, is that highlighted, other financing sources. That is for the SRF loan on the ongoing wastewater project and then the 2025 general obligation bond that we're planning to issue debt on in July 2025. So kind of with those, it really looks like we've got a high budget this year relative to the two years past. On the expenditure side of things, total expenses, $35,473,998. Of that, a little over $7 million is in capital projects and then 16.2 million of that is in business-type activities in that the sewer plant falls under as an independent property utility, financials independent, and general fund. So again, that's just sort of pushing those numbers up. With that, the end and the out, we have an increase of $1 million projected by slightly under $1 million, knowing that some of that is again that debt issuance that we plan to spend over multiple fiscal years. Just a little bit more background on what we're looking at for the subcoming year compared to the current. Our taxable value from FY '25 to FY '26 increased by 0.7%. Our proposed tax levy will be 17.13736. That is an increase from our current levy, and that's really just to make up for, you know, with having flat taxable value growth of how we pick up for some of those increasing Overall, between FY '25 and '26, on the property tax side of things, our tax collections are going up by 1.5% or just shy of $69,000. Tables here compare our different property tax levies in the current FY '25 compared to upcoming fiscal year 2026. The combined general fund levy, that's what funds the day-to-day operating, that one's challenging, the whole going up, you know, 0.7%, about $15,000. And then where we've seen our increases in expenses is really on the cost of insurance and then benefits, primarily FICA and IPRs with increased wages, those go up. And so those net activities are about that 1.5% or just shy of $68,000 compared to the current year. Kind of looking at recent trends, so looking back a couple of years and how this fits in together. So from FY 2022 to 2026, we're averaging a 2.2% annual increase in property tax revenue growth, which is about $92,000 a year. Of our major revenue sources, this breaks those down. You can see that other financing accounts for a little over half of what's in our $36 million budget. So if you take that, out that other financing, this high track here shows our revenue sources, which a quarter coming from property taxes, approximate quarter coming from intergovernmental. So that includes groupers that we have with the county and the school, but the majority of that is the FAA dollars for airport, for the snow removal equipment, as well as for the runway extension project. And then 22% charges for service, that would be our stormwater, urban forest utilities, as well as the wastewater utility. This is just a little bit more detailed breakdown. Expenses by function, so our largest function in terms of expense is public safety, which is over $2.6 million. After that is Public Works, which includes all the Public Works apartments utility, other than Sewer at 2.2 million. Then under Cultural Recreation, we have Library, Parks and Rec, Cemetery. The Economic Development, General Government. Again, we can see that $7 million in capital projects, a little over $16 million in business type activities, which are utilities, which brings us to $35 million, $35.4 million in total expenses. So happy to dive into that one thing, or who else?
Counsel, have any other questions? I think we've done a pretty good job of forwarding the tax, property tax down, so... Any public comments or anything that you...
We haven't received any comments or response to the hearing notice.
Okay. Is there anybody in the council chambers that would like to speak during this public hearing? Okay, seeing none. It is 5:21, and we will close the public hearing then regarding our proposed budget. We'll move to new business. This is Agenda Item Number 11. This is Resolution Concerning the Airport Snow Removal Equipment. Joe is back up.
All right, so this is a continuation of our previous discussion, but we did put the bid documents out on the street and then received one bid from Casey Nielsen. And the bid that I'm going to read you is the one they're going to use. This is for the base bid plus alternate A, so remember me talking about the equipment. This would be the tractor, the snow blower, and reuse of the existing plot. So the existing plot that's out there is about 10 years old. So that number was $502,093.17. The bid they provided by American Documentation, that's under review by FAA, that's for a 7R310 tractor. And the bid was over the engineer's estimate by approximately 8%. In terms of, you know, as you guys know, airport projects typically have grants associated with them. The previous funding allowance for the grant was 90% FAA funded. However, in this fiscal year, it's 95% funded. So you had through the previous capital budgeting, we had budgeted about $46,000 for the tractor project, and it is now $27,425. And that includes the engineering as well.
Anything, Jacob, you'd like to add?
In terms of kind of next steps, what the resolution sets forth, it's awards or accepts the bid from Casey Nielsen for the base bid and the alternate bid, that probably becomes $50,000. And then there are some FAA steps, then you go through.
Correct. But concurrent to the by American, which FAA will issue documents before they issue the grant as well. I have to go to headquarters, that's why it takes a while.
So the snowplow lane we have out there is in good condition? So there's really no reason to replace that?
Joe stated it did not need to be replaced unless we had to replace to go with a different type of tractor.
I didn't know how much it was used compared to the blower.
Does it say there was a bid item for a new one that was related to if there was a different carrier vehicle that was submitted, in case that plow did not, the existing plow did not work with that carrier vehicle? So that's why there was the second alternate, and that was described to the bidders what we would be accepting, once we got the bids, like how we would be accepting that.
I mean, we accept the bid and all the contract from Casey Nielsen.
Second. Motion from Brad, second, from Don. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 12. This is a resolution adopting our fiscal year 25-26 budget.
So this pertains to the public hearing we just had one item ago, so this resolution formally adopts the budget as published and given notice and presented to me.
Motion to approve the resolution adopting FY '26 budget.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I think that's quite good.
Yes. Thank you very much, Jacob, for all your detail and work on that presentation to itself.
Especially Deb.
Yes, and Deb as well, yes. So vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 13. This is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the fiscal year.
This goes along with the recently adopted FY '26 budget. So these are transfers where we know the final dollar amount is a debt service as well as a TIF reimbursement. So this resolution authorizes and directs the city clerk to make these transfers effective July 1st. And then the other transfers that are in the budget, those will be made at a later date once we know the final amounts. Some of them will change based on project costs, timing of when things wrap up. So this resolution just approves those transfers. The final amount will not change.
Motion to approve the resolution for transfers.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second, from Jessica. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 14 is a resolution pertaining to the 2025 Nebraska Street, Thornton Street, and Parkin Lot reconstruction project.
Thank you, Matt Bolton-Bolton-Mc. In your package, find Task Order Number 2 for the 2025 Master Service Professional Engineers Agreement. This is for construction services for the Nebraska Street, Thornton Street, Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. That was bid in early April and awarded at the previous council meeting. In here, includes construction staking, full-time construction observation, construction administration, project closeout, and then with all the electrical components, we do have some small fee for some contracted electrical inspection. So that totaled $340,000 for the entire length of the construction project. Speaking with Castor, who was awarded the contracts, got contracts back on Friday, they're getting reviewed, plan to start the first week of June. Obviously, it's all kind of tentative at the moment, not going to hold to that start date quite yet, but we plan to hold a reconstruction meeting in the middle of May and kind of a neighborhood meeting sometime around then too, once we know schedule and contractor phasing for the affected businesses and residents in that project area. So that's the current status of that project and currently reviewing shop drawings, pipe materials, metals, all the other streetscape products and pieces and components of the construction.
And completion date is?
Substantial completion is November 1st. Final completion is 2026, I believe in June, to kind of finish up those final plantings that may not go well in the fall.
It's still June or November 1st?
All that construction, roads, parking lot.
Yeah, I think it's November 1st to November 15th. Sorry.
15.
It's the 15th.
15, okay, good.
But it's really just how the fall is, if, or when the plants need their, you know, produce themselves.
Yep.
I was going to try to think if there's any city events that are going to need to be watched for with this, or...
Yes, we have stipulations on the contracts that they cannot work Founder's Day again, along with May Day. So they have to obviously have a safe site kind of throughout all construction, just in general. There are stipulations on the contract where they cannot work Friday, Saturday, and Founder's Day at all down there and on May Day.
And then for Founder's Day, we're planning that event as if both blocks of Thornton, Nebraska, one block in Nebraska and the parking lot walls are closed. May not necessarily depend on the final phasing plan, but we're just assuming they won't be available, so they'll plan on something and then have to make a last minute change. But the goal will be to keep, you know, access open as long as we can with that phasing and then coordinate it too with, you know, those off-the-side replacements of keeping, you know, the downtime on those two a minute long.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Brad, second, from Don. Any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Matt. Agenda Item Number 15. This is a resolution referring to the Algonquin Urban Renewal Plan.
So urban renewal or our TIF plans, you might hear us refer to it more casually, just tax increment financing. But this resolution kind of kicks off the next proceedings, the formal amendment to our urban renewal plan. This would be amendment number five to our plan originally adopted back in 1995. We last amended this plan in 2019 when we added the Key Industrial Park or acquisition in that property to the plan. So the resolution sets the consultation meeting, which will be with the affected taxing entities for April 28th at 2:00 p.m. And then a public hearing on the proposed plan amendment for May 19th at 5:00 p.m. at our regular city council meeting. So the plan amendment includes two projects that we've discussed with the council. For development agreements, so the first one with Kinetic Technologies, I guess stepping back a second, so TIF tax increment financing allows us to capture the new increment generated by a project in terms of tax revenue, capture that and use it to pay back expenses for infrastructure, to offer rebate economic development grants to private property developers, or in this case, or both these cases of these two development agreements would be to reimburse the city by the forgivable portion of two forgivable loans on these projects and to be able to use funding for a project that has to be specifically identified in the urban renewal plan. So that's where this amendment covers that. So the first one would be Kinetic Technologies for $200,000 forgivable loan to relocate and construct a new manufacturing facility out in Key Industrial Park. And then the other one would be for $200,000 forgivable loan for development arena with Ben Luke Everwood to redevelop the State Street Hotel. That would be the match for the Community Catalyst Grant application, which was submitted last week. We should know more on that funding decision sometime midsummer, but this is all we have in the plan, so if it gets funded and it moves forward, we have to do another plan amendment. And then we identified several other just potential projects within our urban renewal area that we have identified for future street work. Doesn't commit the city to pursue any of those projects or to use TIF on those, but again, if it's not in our TIF plan, it's not eligible. These are really looking at kind of our commercial corridors, you know, key kind of economic development streets. So Commercial Street, Highway 169, Northfin Drive, extension of streets and infrastructure in the Key Industrial Park, and then other downtown streets. And this just kind of gives a map, this is a map of our current urban renewal plan area. So we've got the, back in 2014, the Ovile Apartments, we used TIF for that. So that was pulled out, that's its own separate plan. Those are kind of, if you zoomed in on this, so the ones marked in blue, otherwise. So this is the area that increments is generated in that we can do economic development projects within, and then that purple area is the, represents the Key Industrial Park that was handed back in 2019. So we have a hearing and a couple of resolutions to finalize this, but this kind of kicks off the proceedings for that to issue formal notices.
Motion to approve the resolution setting the dates of consulting and public hearing.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second, from Jessica. Any discussion? And then vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 16 is a resolution concerning the 2025 Library Exterior Improvements, Phase 2.
So with that project awarded to Kingland Construction, we're now needing similar work from Bolton-Mc earlier, both FH on the construction oversight and administration side of things. So this resolution approves the attached construction phase administration agreement with FH, which is for not, it will be built hourly based on need with a not to exceed price of $22,500.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion for Harley, second, from Jessica, to approve this resolution. Any discussion? Hearing done. Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 17 is to approve a change order for the library exterior improvements.
In fact, in the, or in March, when we awarded the construction contract, the bids came in high, so at that time, we had discussed with Kingland, make some options on how we could reduce that. So this change order formalizes those, going back and forth with a lot of word boards, what we determined were the best options. So it's ultimately a deduct of $42,100. Items, consists of four items. Item one is a removal of structural studs that weren't necessary, so this is kind of a housekeeping item. Items two and three are combined for $19,000 related to proposed lighting changes that we think it's something that we could just hire locally and address for a more affordable amount. And then item number four is a deduct of $21,000, which is a switch in the brick material installation method. Within the specs, there were four different approved way, or materials and ways of installing. Kingland had chosen one that was a little bit more expensive, so after agreeing that with them of, you know, this option, which is already proved equal, we're going to switch to that. So bringing that to the savings, just above $42,000.
Move to approve the change order.
Second.
Motion from Don, second, from Kathy. Any discussion?
And that's where they want to be around that 600?
Yep.
And that's, oh, okay.
We always like a change order with the D right here. Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 18 approves a street closure request from the First United Methodist Church.
Yes, the church has requested two dates to close the street there, just south of the church there, on Nebraska Street between Moore and Harlem Street from 3:30 to 7:30 for two events that they'll be hosting.
Motion to approve street closure. Second. Motion from Rodney, second, from Don. Any discussion? This is very similar to what they did last year to the council.
Yeah, and we don't think, you know, the anticipated issues with, you know, construction going on two blocks to the west, but as we get to that September date, you know, some things come up, you know, we'll have a conversation with them. things come up, you know, we'll have a conversation with them. But yeah, just kind of looking at how it's worked in the past.
Vote please, Deb.
Pardon?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Gendote number 19 is a payout occasion for wastewater treatment facility improvements.
So this is payout number 11, the amount of $989,048.69 for work completed in materials stored in the month of March. Kind of the little items on the expenses for that month were concrete for the oxidation ditch as well as the carpentry utility services and building work for the new UV building, new garage and then electrical components for UV, new UV treatment system, which is in place and running good.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Motion from Harley, second from Don. Any discussion? Getting closer with completion.
Over $40 million.
Yeah, just $40 million ago.
About another 15 more payouts and then.
Vote please, Deb.
Pardon?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Gendote number 20 is also a payout occasion. This is for the airport runway displacement and extension project.
Go for it.
Joe is back up.
I was here, so I thought I'd say something. This is for the runway paving project. I'll give a kind of little brief update, but as you remember, we were awarded this contract probably about a year ago right now. And the contractor, the prime contractor is actually the electrical one, but the contract time is not supposed to be till August that it starts. We did give them a little bit of time in July if they wanted to start ahead of that off of the runway. Kind of talking with the plumber, we're just getting ready to have the pre-con, but I'll be setting that soon. They think they're going to kind of come in at the same time as the paving starts and just do the whole project at one time, but what you have before you is actually a pay request for the purpose of paying for stored materials or materials that they purchased, specifically electrical items for the project, which is a lot of wire conduits and parts and gaskets and bolts and just stuff like that.
So they provided photos, documented the possession and then proof of insurance on it in case something happened.
Was that in the packet too that?
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was or wasn't, that's why. Motion to approve the payout occasion.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Kathy. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Pardon?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Joe, again. Luca, gendote number 21, this is our final agenda item and this is the first notification of term expiring and future appointment of Julie Murphy. She's an AMU Board of Trustee and her term expires 31st of May. The AMU Board consists of five members and this is a mayoral appointment and they serve a six-year term. So again, this is just the first notification and then that position will be eligible for appointment at our X City Council meeting the 5th of May. So with that, it is. I didn't have a minute, I should have mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, that NIACOG is having their anniversary this Thursday over at Mason City at Music Mans Square and they have food and drink. I believe it starts at 7:00, it might be a little earlier. And they have Chris Carr playing down there, he's a very entertaining. And anyway, this is open to any city or county representative, so if you find yourself free on Thursday night or over Mason City area, make sure you stop in there. 7:00 PM. Very good, okay, thank you, Harley. It's 5:44 and I would entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting. We have a motion, second, motion and a second to adjourn. We need to adjourn, thank you very much, everyone.